This is official call to order for the Monroe County Public Library Board of Trustees Meeting for October 16th, 2024. If we will just take a moment to go around if you would introduce yourself and if you'd like to share what you're reading.
I can never remember what I'm reading. I'll have to come back to you, but I'm Amy O'Shaughnessy, and I'll look up what I'm reading at the end of this meeting.
I'm Kathy Loser, and I can-
Look, because I just got the book. The Full Moon Coffee Shop by Mia Mochizuki.
My name is Jamie Burkhart, and I just checked out to reread Uglies.
I'm Greer Carson, and I am reading the Glenn Gould Reader, which is a collection of his essays and interviews. And my family and I are playing the new Zelda game, which is Legend of Zelda: Echoes of Wisdom on the Switch.
My name is Kari Essery, and I am reading Deborah Harkness's The Blackbird Oracle, which on Netflix, I don't mean to be an advertisement here, I'm sorry, but they have the discovery of witches, and so this is just a light silly thing, but it's fun.
And I'm Chris Hall, and I just finished listening to The Ten Tomatoes That Changed the World. Very interesting, actually, nonfiction.
Tomatoes?
Tomatoes, because I had a whole yard of them this year. And then I'm listening to The Dark Flood Rises and the trade-off story for this next time.
I am reading-
There's Always This Year by Hanif Abdurraqib. Thanks.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of approving say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose say nay. Okay, and now we're going to hear from Greer for the Director's Monthly Report.
Okay. So this is the 13th straight month of increased library card signups. Our monthly increases are typically between 150 and 300 individuals, but September saw an increase of 689 cards. Credits due to our public services staff who regularly promote and support library card signups with patrons directly as part of their work, but also to our marketing team's first-rate work and thematic promotions, such as the ones we did in September, and our community engagement work, which finds staff regularly promoting library card signups at various community events. We've had a full month of Hoopla Flex under our belt, and we're happy to see slight increases in both the number of unique overall Hoopla users and unique Flex users specifically. We've also received Hoopla requests from some of these new Flex users, which is great to see, and that's one of the benefits that come with using Hoopla Flex. We're now offering native Indiana wildflower seeds for the first time as part of our ongoing seed library, and our seed library volunteers have packaged over 13,000 seeds this year, which is kind of amazing. Vital has served 250 individual adult learners so far this year, thanks in large part to our incredible team of Vital volunteers. Our downtown children's department hosted 41 individual programs in the month of September alone. That's an average of nearly one and a half programs a day for the entire month, and they saw over 770 attendees across those 41 programs. And as we mentioned briefly last month, we had a successful staff day on September 17th. This is a very valuable annual event for us, and as always, we appreciate our community's patience as we close to the public for the day to focus on important professional development and team-building activities. Happy to answer any questions about the Director's Report.
I just have a comment. I always enjoy reading the Director's Report, because then you know what's happening in the library. And just one of the little stories was on page 81 about a librarian that is a print selector who came across the little boy and helped him. And my question, and it's just charming, and there's so many charming stories in here. How do people tell you, or how do you get them?
So sometimes a manager will share that story and say, I just want to celebrate, in this case, Emmy Champion, did a great job, she's our new children's print selector. Sometimes we'll hear from patrons directly, had this wonderful experience with this individual, I want to give them kudos. Sometimes we'll see it ourselves. We encourage our managers for the Director's Report to share some of those anecdotes that, while maybe not statistical, really do, as you say, sort of tell the story of what it's like to come in here and work with our staff and get the help that you need, and I think that was a really great example.
There were others, many others, so I just highlighted that one.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for doing that.
I just also want to make a comment-
Then, it's interesting reading about the social media activity, too, which brings me to a question. I don't know if this is the right time, but I know you have Instagram, TikTok, and of course, Facebook and online stuff. Do we use X, formerly known as Twitter?
We do. We have X accounts. We've had them for as long as it's been Twitter and ubiquitous.
What's- I'd like to have a discussion about that, because I really think that I'm not sure I like the direction that X is going, and I really do believe that as a public entity and institution, I sometimes worry that because it's being released through us in some format of our information, is I really am very skeptical and very nervous about being aligned with a site that is now moving into pornographic things, moving into, you know, conspiracy theories, moving into things that are just not true and can be very harmful to certain populations in the United States-
Sure.
-as well as the world. So I don't know where we cover that. I think we do need a social media presence, but I'm really concerned about us being aligned with X, formerly known as Twitter.
Understood. So we can certainly have that conversation. When we do think about these things, we think of them in terms of how ubiquitous and popular is a given platform, independent of any political ideology associated with it. We also think historically about some of the same things we've seen happen to Facebook. A couple of years ago, there were some similar concerns. Practically speaking, it's Facebook and Instagram that we do most of our social media work, and that's where we get the most traction. So while we do have an X account, it's not nearly as active as those other two. But this is something Tori Lawhorn and I actually just talked about last week.
Oh, really? Because I just, I've been following it and seeing what's happening around the world as well, as, you know, different entities, government institutions are really, really trying to pull it in and say, you know, this is, can be very harmful with disinformation.
Right. Yeah, we can certainly have that discussion from a policy standpoint.
Thank you.
Yes, of course.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution to adopt the 2025 library budget?
Second.
Okay. We're going to hear a little bit more from Gary Lutler.
Last month at the public hearing, we went over the 2025 budget numbers in some detail. Tonight, we have the final step of the budget process, which is approval of the adoption form. The budget adoption resolution is on page 89 of the packet. The first column on the adoption form shows the adopted spending budget for each of the library's funds. The total spending budget for all the funds is $13,263,801. The second column on the adoption form is the budgeted revenue from the operating fund tax levy and the debt fund levy. The operating fund tax levy is about $7,966,000, and the debt fund levy is about $901,000. The third column on the form is the tax rate. The combined operating fund and debt fund tax rate for 2025 is 7.93 cents per hundred dollars of assessed value. In 2024, it was 8.53 cents, so quite a drop this year. Are there any questions about this adoption form?
About the form or about the budget in general?
Budget in general.
Okay. Because I wasn't here last week, or last month, I noticed that the, on page 91 of the packet, the change from our assessed value went up 11.66 percent. What does that mean, or why does that happen, or did property values go up again?
Well, what it means is when you total up all of the property that's taxable in the county, that's taxable for property taxes, that includes residential and commercial. And so, yes, residential prices, housing prices are going up, but we also see in this town a lot of new construction. There are businesses here that buy equipment and have inventory, and all those things are taxable. So it's not, it's not just residential property that is increasing in value. It's also, you know, other things, new construction and business property.
I noticed one other year that had done a 17 percent.
Yes.
Which was really weird, but, but most of the time, it's like three or four.
Right.
So then we have these spikes.
Yeah, in the, in these last few years, you're absolutely right. It's, it's amazing how fast it's growing.
Yeah. Okay, so it's a lot of business and new construction is-
And residential.
And residential is going up, too.
Yeah, combination of all.
Would it be with all the things around IU as well? All the housing for IU or around the areas?
Well, so when, going out of town north and by McDonald's-
Right.
-I always see the very large living accommodations that, that's not owned by IU, I'm pretty sure, so-
That would be helpful.
You know, if it's commercially owned, then, yes.
And the old Kmart and all that area, too?
Yeah, that's all commercially, commercial property, and so it's taxable.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions before we vote? Okay. All in favor of approving the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose say nay. Thank you, Gary.
You're welcome.
Do I have a motion to approve the additional appropriation?
Second.
So as we look at projected spending for 2024 in the operating fund and the rainy day funds, we see that we are closer to the budget limit at this point in the year than we have been since I've been here. After nine months, the spending guideline is 75 percent of the budget, and we're at about 73. So an additional appropriation of $500,000 in the rainy day fund is what we have requested. We're requesting it of this board, and we requested it of the county council. They have to approve it because we're going, this puts us over the growth quotient, and so we have to go to the county council. We went last night, and they approved it. But this will assure that the library will not go over the budget if something unexpected happens in the fourth quarter. We have the cash in the rainy day fund to cover the additional appropriation. It's unusual for the library to be in this position, and the reason we're so close to the budget limit this year is because the new Southwest branch is in its first full year of operation. Any questions?
What would be the balance for the rainy day fund?
If we, if we, well, the balance right now, I think, is about $2.2 million. So if, I mean, if we used it, it would be down to about 1.7.
Okay, thank you.
And it sounded like from your other reports in here that we're getting a good handle on what the Southwest branch is going to cost now.
Yes.
So you could put that into the budget, and we shouldn't be in this place again.
With, with this year of history of cost, it's, it's going to be a lot easier to project expenses for the future.
And that Southwest branch has brought so much joy and help and to so many, so it was a good thing.
And we're not going to have any more problems over there as far as I'm concerned.
Very good.
Okay.
For you.
All in favor of approving the additional appropriation, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose say nay. And motion approved. Now we're going to hear from Cory about some health insurance updates.
So Cory Johnson from JA has worked with us for a long time, and we're grateful to our friends at JA for helping us navigate annual health insurance increases, and they've been doing that work for us like they always do. And I think tonight, we're just going to get some preliminary information. It's next month that we'll look at the hard numbers and then do a vote on renewing.
Yep. Thanks for having us. We appreciate your, working with you and the great team here. I think there's some items, do I need to pull them up, or are they in the packet? Yep. Sorry, Becky. I think they were up here, but I may have lost them. I can certainly do without them.
They should be here somewhere. Oh, here, there.
Thanks.
I'm so sorry.
No, I wouldn't.
I can tell the folder. I'll- I got it, yeah.
Yep, thank you all. I think I need to switch screens, maybe. If I present again, can we switch the, thank you so much, technology? I usually print for that very reason, as much as I try to avoid it. So I, as Greer mentioned, I'm Cory Johnson with JA Benefits. We've been working with the library for a fair bit of time, and we enjoy the process. Wanted to cover a few quick things today. We try to do early renewals. It doesn't always happen, but this year, we are on time, in our view. The market doesn't always allow us for that, but we're excited to be wrapping up quickly. There's a long history. It's in your packet. It's real hard to read on the I chart up here. I think the recent history was the move from SciHo to Anthem a couple of years ago with a reduction in rates. Just a quick history as well. Last year was a rate hold with a premium credit, so about 5 percent premium credit, so really cash in, reduced the rates effectively at the group level. And then this year, we are originally receiving 15.56 percent. We've worked to negotiate that to an 8 percent with a $25,000 premium credit. So effectively, a 5 percent. After three years, we feel like that's a pretty good result. Obviously, healthcare costs are going up, cost of care is going up. We do want to keep an eye on that, but with the move to Anthem, I think employees have felt that difference. SciHo has been, was great. I think Anthem has obviously got some advantages on the technology side that the employees have been feeling from our discussions internally. Happy to answer any questions, but that's the short update. Good question. It used to, way back when, stand for Johnson and Associates. It is. We have multiple partners that are not Johnson now, but I am one of the partners and also a Johnson. However, when we rebranded, we kind of changed it to Journey Ahead. So helping you on your journey ahead in the benefits world. We added benefits because people didn't quite know what JA stood for either. So good question and happy to answer it.
Thank you.
So when you got the original quote of increasing 15.56 percent, which is a big jump.
It's a big one.
And then you got it down to eight to five. What do you do?
Good question. I will share as much as I can. We do see twice a year, at our size, claims detail, so we can see the month-by-month claims versus premium. So we kind of have a sense for how much have you paid in to the insurance company and how much have they paid out? You're at over 100 percent, just as a round number, so that's, I expected it to be actually closer to the 15. The medical trend and the pharmacy trend is around 11 to 13 percent. So if you're running over 100 percent, their targets are generally 75 percent, because that's just the claims, they've got to put their admin cost and some other margin in there for profit, generally at the insurance company level. But in general, we talk about what does the profile of that last year look like? And if that last year looks bad, we talk about multiple years. They don't want us to do that, but we do. We say, well, look how good the three-year run is. So we pull all that data, and we can do it twice a year by state mandate. Most of the insurance companies, I think all of them, but a few, will only give it twice a year on under 100 enrolled. So we say that's a state minimum. We keep, we just say that over and over, because I think it's really, they could give it to you every month, but they don't. So twice a year, we pull that. And it looked pretty, not great. We also get details on the high-cost claimants, so, and no names, but enough to know what's going on. And so we were able to see that a large portion of that highest-cost claim, which was over $150,000 for one single member, was a drug cost. And we happen to know that the insurance company gets some of that money back in a rebate, whole different topic. We can cover that in a future data if you'd like. But in general, there was, the claims, even though they were over 100 percent, didn't look that bad. So I'm surprised they moved that far after having our two years of history, which was a rate reduction to come to Anthem and then a rate hold with some cash back last year. But essentially, we try to make sure it's a fair renewal, so try to hit that 75 percent loss ratio, and if you're better than that, we hopefully reduce rates. If you're worse than that, we try to manage it down to the most reasonable, appropriate cost. A lot of times, if you have a very large claim that's going to run into next year, it'll be harder to get that number down effectively. So it's a known risk instead of a maybe unknown risk.
Thank you for your-
Yep, happy to help. Yep.
Questions? You mentioned the move to Anthem had some, I think you said, online resources for employees. Can you talk a little bit more about that? What is that, is that like for them to be able to access care or information, or-
Yep, there's an app called the Sydney App. I think the team here at the library is familiar with that in historical experience as well. We'd been with SciHo for a long time, and I think they're a reasonable partner. They were a good partner, and I think they just didn't hit the target on rate, frankly, in that year. They had taken losses, and they decided they needed to recover them, which is going to happen again here at some point. I won't say when for Anthem, but it'll happen, and we'll have to reevaluate. But the technology side was more integrated into one location, so better access for members from a phone or web is one of the driving reasons that people, I think, have enjoyed Anthem. I'd let Becky speak to anything else they're enjoying, if you want to join in. Don't feel obligated, but-
I know one of the other things that folks appreciate is Anthem will let you do like a cost estimate before you actually go in to get care. So you can say, my doctor has, you know, recommended this procedure or this, you know, care plan. What is it going to cost? And you can look and see, what will it cost, and where can I go to get the, the care done? And I don't think we could do that with SciHo quite as easily.
Yep. It was a little bit of a call and wait and cumbersome. I think they both are required a lot to do it, but Anthem's was more user-friendly, for sure.
And-
They both had pretty broad networks, but Anthem's hard to not know, so I think it's very familiar for people as well and comfortable. In town, we watch network access, so we've looked at United Healthcare in the past and others, and there are some challenges with others. Historically, we looked at IU. There's now going to be Anthem next year with some news in the market, but we've kind of evaluated a lot of the options on network and technology fronts.
How many, thank you. How many library employees, you said fewer than 100. How many library employees have benefits?
Yep. I'm going to do my quick math. I want to say we're at 70?
97.
97. More than I thought.
Fewer than 100.
Yep. We're just barely. So if we creep over, I know we've added some staff as well, so if we hit that target, we'll see monthly claims, which I always prefer more data, so we can, one, see what's coming, but two, just have more information to negotiate with. Yep. Any more questions? Ask away.
For how many nonprofit, or I imagine it's a lot of nonprofits, but for how many organizations does JA provide this benefits analysis and recommendations?
Consulting. I think we have over 300 group clients. We do a lot of government entities, schools, towns, cities. I work with a lot of nonprofits as well, developmental disability organizations, and all the way through manufacturers and cities, towns, and schools, a lot of school systems. Yep. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks for all the work you do. Thank you, Cory.
Now we're going to hear from Elizabeth from Adult Services.
Is that the folder? Yeah. Where is it?
Elizabeth, now that I know, I left my phone. Is it right here?
Yeah.
Since Becky showed me how. I see the Director's Report is in there.
That's mine. Okay. There we go, look at that. Hopped right up, see? You got it for me. Thank you. Where's my view? There we go, we're good. Okay. Thank you for giving me some time tonight to talk to you about what's been going on in Adult Services. I'm going to cover mostly newer initiatives that we've done, but I will cover a few of ongoing things that we've had going on as well. The first thing that I want to talk about is programming. Our summer reading program, we broke records again this year. We had 2,200 participants, and this is largely due to the hard work of Adult Services librarian Maggie Hutt. She plans the various adult challenges and how they'll work, and then our communications and marketing team bring Maggie's vision to life by planning out our game boards. We also had another Wild Edibles Walk. This returned due to popular demand. An edible plant enthusiast named Jules Irwin took participants on a stroll along some of the beautiful trails at Griffey Lake. This provided a beginner's look at a variety of edible, medicinal, and useful plants in our area. This summer, the library hosted a tallest sunflower competition. We provided seeds and basic care instructions. Then patrons grew their plants and submitted the height along with photographic evidence of what they grew, and the tallest sunflower that was grown was 13 feet 8 inches. I know, I thought that was kind of impressive, too. The library also celebrated the Dragon Boat Festival in partnership with National Taiwan University's BEST Program. This festival commemorates the Chinese poet Chu Yun and his life through various customs. Participants experienced a few of the customs and traditions, such as making a sachet and eating zongzoo, which is a bamboo-wrapped rice ball. Our book clubs continue to meet and expand. Our Green Peeps Book Club, which reads environmental and nature-focused books, continues to meet at various outdoor venues during nice weather. Our Books on Tab Book Club also continues to meet at various venues around Bloomington, anywhere from tea shops to bars. And we have a new book club that started this year. Librarian Emily Bedwell started our Short Attention Span Book Club. They read novelists or shorter books, and it has proven to be very popular with people who don't, it seems like they don't have time to read a whole book, so that's an easy way for them to join in. Level Up has also expanded their programming to include photo sessions this year. The first one was held on grandparents' Day, and they had a large crowd that turned out to have family photos taken with themed backdrops. Participants received a printed photo that they could keep. And right now, I just got this information this morning, we have a two-sentence horror story contest, which is going on. It was created by librarian Emily Bedwell, and the top three winners will receive gift cards to the bookstore of their choice. As of yesterday, we had an astounding 89 entries, which surprised me. I did not expect us to have that many, so people are enjoying that for Halloween. And finally, we had, I'm sorry, I went there, touched it. Finally, we had Mike Familiant. He's a full-time Bigfoot hunter, and he brought his Live Search in America 24 Tour to the library. We had an enthusiastic crowd of all ages that attended. After he spoke, they had the chance to ask questions, and there were a lot of questions that were asked. And he also had artifacts that people could look at from his adventures out seeking for Bigfoot. He hasn't found him yet, but he's still looking. So that was kind of fun. Services at the library. For the first time this year, we welcomed a social work intern from IU School of Social Work. Our first intern was a master's student who spent time figuring- And finally, we had, I'm sorry, I went there, touched it. Finally, we had Mike Familiant. He's a full-time Bigfoot hunter, and he brought his Live Search in America 24 Tour to the library. We had an enthusiastic crowd of all ages that attended. After he spoke, they had the chance to ask questions, and there were a lot of questions that were asked. And he also had artifacts that people could look at from his adventures out seeking for Bigfoot. He hasn't found him yet, but he's still looking. So that was kind of fun. Services at the library. For the first time this year, we welcomed a social work intern from IU School of Social Work. Our first intern was a master's student who spent time figuring out how a social work intern could best serve the library, as well as working with some of our patrons that were in need. He also created a staff training that focused on serving our most vulnerable community members. We also developed a game collection for patrons to use when they're in the library. Library assistants Ian Hoagland and Lauren Andrejack developed this collection, and it has a wide variety of games, from fairly simple ones to more complex ones. And Greer kind of already stole my thunder on the seed library. We, as he said, we added the Indiana native wildflower seeds, and that was something that the community had been asking for, so it's great that we were able to do that. And as he said, we have had 13,500 seed packages done by volunteers so far this year. Adult Services librarians Emily Bedwell and Maggie Hutt created self-care kits for patrons experiencing homelessness. They used the leftover water bottles that we had from the previous year's summer reading. It was Camp Meth, we had water bottles. And they filled those water bottles with hygiene items, including soap, shampoo, toothpaste, a toothbrush, and there were these, this was my favorite thing, these, they were little washcloths, they were like this big, and then when you put them in water, they expand to be a full-size washcloth. They're getting ready to do another round of those next month as well. Nonprofit Central, led by Adult Services librarian Jack Kowaleski, continues to hold workshops targeting grant-seeking information and research skills. Following these sessions, usage to our subscription database focused on nonprofit Central always increases. In addition to learning the basics of prospect research and writing grant proposals, participants also network with other organizations to collaborate and share knowledge. And Level Up has added a software program called MaxStitch. This allows patrons to create their own design for different fiber arts projects. For example, a patron could take a photograph and have it scanned into the program, then it would create like a, you could choose whatever you wanted, but like a cross-stitch pattern, and then you could make your own unique cross-stitch design from that pattern. And I will talk about our community engagement. We had nearly 70 people attend a Welcome Corps on the Road program when they visited Bloomington. Welcome Corps assists refugees with their resettlement needs and is based in Indianapolis. Both refugees and those in Bloomington who work with refugees attended the meeting, learning more about resources available, as well as the experiences of refugees coming to the United States. I introduced several attendees from that program to our vital program. Indiana Legal Services held an eviction clinic at the library. This clinic helped participants determine if they could make use of a recent law to have their eviction sealed from public record. This change may make it easier for those eligible to find housing. I recently attended a common council meeting at the city of Bloomington for roundtable discussions about issues facing our community members experiencing homelessness. We separated out into groups and brainstormed ideas for addressing issues that this population faces every day. Becky Rice, our technology and professional, our technology professional, and library assistant Lauren Andrejack attended McVention recently. They 3D-printed gibbets, which are the cute little things that fit into the top of crocs, and they gave those out to patrons that came to visit. They also had the 3D printer with them and had it running so that folks could understand how it worked. And once again, they had a green screen available for people to take photos, and then they got to choose the background that they wanted in their photo. And my favorite thing, finally, after two long years, the library finally brought the Health Net Street Medicine Clinic to our building. Twice a month, Health Net holds their street medicine clinic at the library. The clinic serves as a walk-in clinic for patrons experiencing homelessness. Basic illnesses can be treated, and referrals can be made for health issues requiring more extensive care. Health Net spends a lot of time developing relationships with their patrons to make it easier and more comfortable for them to seek help. So I can't tell you how happy I was that we finally got all that to go through and that they've been here. And finally, I'm going to finish off with some patron comments that we've had. This is the Adult Services staff, so you can get an idea of some faces as I talk about this. Hello, I just wanted to say I really liked the seed program. I took seeds last year and got into gardening, and I really don't think I would have otherwise. I also went to the library seed exchange this year and enjoyed it, and now have some new plants coming in from that. I wanted to take a moment to mention some outstanding MCL staff who have helped me a lot this year. Jack Kowaleski, who answered questions about the library profession for me. The Info helped me greatly in completing a school project. Maggie Hutt for organizing the CHOP challenges. The Interlibrary Loan Department for their hard work tracking down tough-to-find loan requests that I've recently made. In this case, the Interlibrary Loan Department is our library assistant Lauren Andrejack. She does all of those, and she does a great job at finding difficult-to-find items for people. I just want to say I enjoyed the display in the downtown library with the books of the same colored jacket. I don't know why, but I think those displays are fun. So we had a display that was called, I don't remember the title, but the cover was, and then each, we had it up for a month, and each week we changed colors. So it was like red, blue, like that. Communications and marketing staff, I have to thank them because they came up with the idea. And then librarians Maggie Hutt and Emily Bedwell and library assistant Cole Champion kept this fun display stocked with appropriately colored books. People were fascinated. I kind of was, too. I don't know why it was really eye-catching, and people would go over and just take a bunch of books to check out from it, so we had fun with that one. The Level Up studios are so amazing. There's so much at my disposal, and the workers are so knowledgeable and helpful. Truth be told, other than my college degree, this is the best thing that happened to me since I moved here. Christine at the front desk was extremely gracious and kind to me and helped me print a resume that led to my new job. This patron is referring to Adult Services librarian Christine Friesel. She assisted a patron with a common task, printing off a resume, which had really impactful results. This person let us know that they got a job, which is a great feeling. And finally, I just wanted to thank Edwin for helping me with the film negatives I brought to the library. He showed me how to scan and save to flash drive pictures from those negatives, which were from 1950. These included photos of my parents' wedding, and I am so happy and grateful for this time and help. I will be in to do more film from the 1950s and 60s that I found after my dad died. My mom died when I was young, and these old negatives mean a lot to me. I have used computers for 25 years and was a librarian for 40 years, but like to learn new things. Thank you to your awesome staff. This is about library assistant Edwin Falwell. He frequently assists with very complex needs in Level Up, and he always figures out a way to help anybody that needs it. And finally, I just want to thank the Adult Services staff. Their talent, hard work, and care for our community truly makes the library the heart of Monroe County. So thanks. Do you have any questions about anything? Thank you.
Sure. Health Net, too, and I'm very excited that it's.
Finally going, yeah.
If they need medication, I can't remember, like an antibiotic or something.
Yes, they can write prescriptions for folks. They can also write like short-term prescriptions if they've run out of a medication that they're on. I think it's like two weeks is what they told me that they can do, so they can do that kind of stuff, too.
Only here or is it at the branches as well?
So they're only here. I believe that they're mobile, they have a mobile unit, and I think it parks in the Elletsville, am I correct? The Elletsville parking lot. But they, they go all over, like they go, they go to Shalom Center, they, they have clinics all over the place. Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you. We waited for that for a long time.
Thank you so much for sharing the report. I wanted to say that when Greer said it was 13,000 or 1,300 seeds, I was like, oh, that's a lot, but 1,300 packages of seeds is, you're like really taking a cake.
It's 13,000, yeah.
13,000, okay.
And almost all of those have gone out. There's, there aren't a ton waiting around, so it's pretty amazing, the amount of seeds that the library gets out to the community.
Yeah, it's awesome.
Which is great.
But we reflect sometimes on like the seed library, I don't know, what was it, 2019 or 18? I think, can't remember when we launched it.
Probably, yeah, yeah, I think it was 2019.
And it looked very, very different from what it looks like now. So, I don't know, somebody, just the way we packaged it, where, yeah, it was a different drawer system, it was a different location, and it certainly wasn't as extensive as it is now. But somebody just today shared with, I can't remember who, but shared that somebody, was it you, Lorraine? Was that right? Yeah, somebody, you, you saw somebody staring at the seed library and going, wow, this is amazing, yeah.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's, it's gained a lot of traction, and it's in great hands with Elizabeth and her team now, so it's really developed.
Yeah, that is complete, I have to give all the kudos to Maggie Hutt. She spends a lot of time, works really hard on it. She's just done a great job.
One more question.
Sure.
So with the Level Up, and you have a picture, and you could make it into a cross-stitch pattern or anything else, can you say what other things you can make with those?
So you can do embroidery, you can create, I don't do any fiber arts, you can create quilting patterns, all kinds of things like that. I'm assuming, and I don't know, but I, if you could do quilting patterns, I don't know why you couldn't make your own sewing pattern of any kind. That, it's completely geared to everything that has to do with fiber arts.
Fiber arts, okay.
And it was, it was not expensive at all. That's why we kind of went with it as a first step, kind of into that.
That's a cool idea.
Yeah, it's really neat. And they're, they're, you know, getting to know how it works and everything, and then they're going to do some programming, they're going to like start soft programming with it before they really start pushing it, just so they can find out all the things that it does.
Yeah, that's cool.
Yeah.
Thank you. I don't do that either, so.
I, I know, I know, I'm like, that's awesome, but I don't know what to do.
I was just curious.
Yeah, people like it, and people are really into fiber arts. Like, I'm shocked, we have all kinds of, you know, fiber arts classes and things, and lots of people always come. They want to just sit and work on their projects and chat, so.
It's great.
Yeah.
I just wondered if you see the reach that you have, and thank you for sharing so many details, too.
Thank you.
Even just, and I think I've got this number right, the 2,200 participants, adult participants in the summer reading program?
Yes.
Like, I know that I received a packet, did some of the work, but I'm sure you're just counting folks who like turned something in at the end.
Yeah, and it's pretty amazing.
So the reach is just really astounding.
Yeah, it's amazing, the number of people who, who do that, and then, you know, on ours, if you open it up, just like the kids, there's a big picture you can color inside. And so some people thought they, they couldn't be finished until they colored the whole picture. You don't have to color the picture, it's okay. But some people really enjoyed, you know, coloring, because you get away from that when you're an adult, and some people really enjoy that. And we have a table out, which we leave out all the time now, that has coloring supplies, it's up on the second floor. More often than not, there's just somebody sitting there coloring away. They just enjoy doing it, so, yeah, it's fun. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Am I up again?
What's up?
Am I up again?
Up again? That's it, right? You have more you're going to share?
The DEI, did you want me to do?
Oh, yeah, continue, please, if you want to talk about that, that's great.
This is separate, let me get this out of the way, because we're not there anymore. There we go. I'm just going to give you a very brief rundown on work that our diversity, equity, and inclusion team has done this past year. This past year, the diversity, equity, and inclusion team studied the library's programming from a DEI perspective. Current members of the team are myself and Libby Pennington from Outreach as co-chairs, Dana Duffy, our programming coordinator, Will Ellis of Adult Services, Jenny Hostler from Southwest Branch, and Reagan Zalea of Children's Services. Each member of our team examined a library department's programming. So we looked at children's, teens, adult, outreach, Southwest, and Elletsville. We based our questions on two already existing documents. The Equity and Inclusion Lens Guide by the Nonprofit Association of Oregon, and the Equity and Empowerment Lens from Multnomah County in Portland, and then developed our own Equity Lens tool to look specifically at programming at MCL. We came up with the following questions. Is the program designed to represent the diversity of our community? Consider presenters, audience, content, promotional materials, and partners. Is the program designed to ensure that a full diversity of people can participate with dignity? Consider mobility, visual or hearing impairments, childcare, transportation, and language. Does the time of the program consider potential demands on a patron's time? Consider work hours, school hours, religious observances, and cultural holidays. And the last one is, are the needs of historically marginalized groups considered in our programming? Consider LGBTQIA+ community, BIPOC, non-native English speakers, people with disabilities, both physical and mental, economically disadvantaged patrons, people experiencing homelessness, and older patrons. We spent a lot of time looking at similarities and differences among departments, and then we proposed four changes. First, the DEI team will create a checklist of DEI considerations during program planning and send to administration for inclusion and program planning workflow. The program coordinator will review current program reflection practices within the teen services department to see if the process could be tailored to suit all MCL departments. Administration will consider proposed updates of the Monroe County Public Library Program and Mission Guidelines to reflect current practices and integration of DEI principles. And the DEI team will locate and offer training for staff based on cross-cultural communication and the development of community partnerships. We're hopeful that implementing these changes will be a step towards a culture at MCL where diversity, equity, and inclusion become an automatic consideration in our work. We do a pretty good job currently, but our team hopes to find ways to improve and implement DEI actions across the library. Does anybody have questions about that? It's a lot, like it's a lot of words, when I was saying, and I'm like, this is a lot of words. So do you have any questions about that? Please let me know. It took us literally the whole year to do, to undertake all that work and to, to get it done, so.
As I was thinking about the different books that you shared and just seeing some others, it does seem like we do, to have, like you were saying, we do a pretty good job already. So do you see a lot of changes?
I don't, I don't think there will be a ton. I think really what, what we need to focus on is making it just part of how we think about everything we do here. And that's really our main goal, is to get it in everybody's mindset so that everything that you do, you're considering it from that perspective as well, because it's very easy not to do that. So we definitely want to, you know, eventually down the road, I think we'll get there.
Can you share where you are in the process? So you said, you spent the last year putting this sort of framework together, and then are you looking to sort of like have it be implemented in this next year? Or have you already started using it for events that are going on now?
So, no, so we, we just finished it up in September, really was when we got everything done and pulled everything together and gave the giant document to Josh and Greer to look at everything. I think this first time was difficult because we had not done the process of using what's called an Equity Lens tool, and if you've never done that, you know, you have to figure out how to do it, and you have to figure out how to do it in a way that makes sense for your institution. So some of, we, these should not be hard to implement, the things that we talked about here that we wanted to do, and I'm assuming that we'll start working on those next year. But we'll also start looking at, you know, different things across the library. So at some point, I'm sure we'll use this Equity Lens tool to look at our collections, all kinds of things like that, which we tried, we started off with programming because we felt like that might be, it wasn't easy, but we felt like it was sort of more manageable than anything else that we could do. So that's why we started with programming.
Love that, and I feel like that has the most immediate impact on your patrons, too.
Yeah, and, and we had Dana on there, who's our programming coordinator, which, which helped, and all of us have had experience with programming. So that made a difference, too. But, you know, there's a lot, like when you really start breaking it down and thinking about what you need to look at, it's kind of overwhelming. So that's why I'm like, we just take one thing at a time, you know, and keep going.
Well, I appreciate you sharing the questions, too, because I feel like it's easy to think, like, how accessible is this program? But specifically breaking down.
Yeah, that's what we did.
Let's, let's look at it through these lenses.
That's what we, at first, we just came up with the questions, and then I was like, let's think about like what, within each category, do we really need to think about and look at? And so that's how we broke it down, which did make it a little more concrete, and you could really apply that then when we were looking at the programs. So, we looked at the programs from last year, that's what we did.
You move what you, you move what you measure, or whatever that expression is?
Exactly.
So even just thinking about what other, like, programs might come of saying, hey, we noticed that as we're, you know, putting together programs, we didn't have a lot that fit all of these categories.
And that's what we noticed, you know, there, there are some that we hit really well and others that we don't. So it's good for us to keep all of those in mind as we move forward.
Kudos.
Thank you.